No, you don't.
We can skip over that part.
Good excuse.
Was exposed to someone. Such materials must state the agenda item for which it is being submitted and the name and address of the submitting party. Planning Commission business is conducted first, followed by Board of Adjustment business. The Chair will call the meeting to order and explain the meeting procedure. The Chair will read each agenda item into the record and ask the applicants to come forward to presenter's table, state his or her or their names, addresses for the record, and explain their request. The Planning Commission Board of Adjustment will then discuss the agenda item with the applicant. The Chair will then ask for public comment on the agenda item. To facilitate an orderly, efficient meeting, there is a three-minute speaking time limit per speaker per agenda item, unless the Chair allows a speaker additional time. The Chair may terminate the speaker's privilege of address if after being called to order the speaker persists in improper conduct or remarks. When the Chair recognizes a speaker, he or she may approach the audience podium and microphone, state his or her full name and address for the record, and write such on the speaker log, and then share his or her comments. The audience podium microphone must be used by this recognized speaker because the meeting is recorded. A member of the public may not donate his or her speaking time to another speaker. A speaker should state his or her comments and address the issue, not the applicant's. All comments are to be directed to the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment. Please do not repeat comments already made by previous speakers. The Chair reserves the right to ask a group with similar comments to appoint a spokesperson. If written comments have been submitted to the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment, please do not read them aloud during the meeting as they are already part of the record and copies thereof have been given to the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment. After everyone wanting to speak at an end, agenda item has done so, the Chair will close public comment period on the agenda item. No further public comment may be taken after this point. The Chair will give the applicant an opportunity to address issues raised during public comment. The Planning Commission Board of Adjustment will then continue its discussion on the agenda item and the Chair will entertain a motion on it. The Planning Commission Board of Adjustment may make a motion to pass, deny, or table the item. Once the motion is made and seconded, the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment will develop findings of fact for conditional use permit and variance applications and then vote on the motion. Once the vote is taken on an agenda item, the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment will move on to the next agenda item. Meetings commence at 6:00 PM and continue until all agenda items have been heard or until 10:00 PM. No new agenda items shall be considered after 9:45 PM. The Planning Commission Board of Adjustment may at its discretion continue an item that is on the floor at 10:00 PM. Any remaining agenda items shall be continued to another date, time, preferably immediately following Tuesday at 6:00 PM, and no further public notice will be provided for such a meeting continuation. The Planning Commission Board of Adjustment through the Chair may modify these procedures prior to the meeting or an agenda item. Okay, with that, we'll start with the Planning Commission agenda and the approval of minutes from the April 25, 2022 meeting. Has everyone had a chance to review those? Changes, corrections, additions are someone ready to make a motion.
This is Veronica, I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes as presented.
This is Timothy, I'll second that motion.
We have a motion by Veronica, a second by Timothy to approve the minutes. Timothy, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
Veronica, I vote aye.
This is Mike, I vote aye, the minutes are approved. No old business, the only new business is a conditional use amendment application 1-CU-22 by Bonnie Brand, Lakes Area Windsurfing, and it's my understanding that that has been tabled to a later date, is that correct Eric?
Yes.
Okay, with that, that is, there's, then we will move on to the Board of Adjustment and the approval of the Board of Adjustment meeting minutes from April 25.
This is Ken, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the Board of Adjustment from April 25.
This is Veronica, I second the motion.
A motion by Ken, a second by Veronica to approve the minutes. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy, I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you, or Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
Veronica, I vote aye.
Mike, I vote aye, it passes. And we'll move then to old business, variance application 68-V-21 by Keith Muller, Unit 5, CIC Number 7, Village of the Pine, Section 19, Township 141, Range 34, Lake Emmett Township on Potato Lake, a recreational development lake. Parcel 16.39.90500, applicant is requesting a variance from Section 702 of the Shoreline Management Ordinance for Proposed Enlargement of a Nonconforming Residence Located in the Shore Impact Zone. The applicants come forward and state their name and address for the record and then describe what they're asking for.
Hi, good evening, my name is Rachel Mueller.
Keith Mueller, 24323 Hidden Village Loop, Park Rapids.
Pull the microphone, will you pull the microphone?
Keith Mueller, 24323, Hidden Village Loop, Park Rapids.
So we had sent in, Keith had been to a board meeting in February and that was tabled and since that time, we've submitted new material with a change in the proposed plan. We had surveyors come out and excavators come out and survey the area for potential building of a basement, which was one of the things that we were asked to look into. And that came back to us as an option that he did not feel was a safe option for digging in that area due to the location of the cabins proximity close to us. So, taking into consideration everything that you asked us to look at, we changed the proposal to minimize the height of the cabin that was going in. The original height that we had first proposed would have been 24 and the new proposal is 17. It also changes the appearance where it had a flat front, which would have visually impacted more to a peaked roof. And so it clears more of the visual impact from the lake zone out. It does allow us more room in the home to put a bedroom in that second level. With a 20 by 20 foot, when we bought the cabin 20 years ago, we had a small family and they've now grown up and gotten married. And so, we enjoy using the cabin and having that additional space would just allow us to be more comfortable using that space with our family. It does not increase, increase any of the bedrooms or number of people that would use that. You know, we know that we don't have any options with owning, not owning the land in a PUD to move anything and so we're restricted to that 20 by 20 footprint.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the Board? Start off, I tell you, I appreciate the extra effort that you've put in since our first meeting and looking at different options and stuff, and I know it's taken you some time to do that, but we appreciate that. And then, the fact of, I appreciate that height and the change of the face of the building where it will have considerably less impact. So to me, those are some very positive things that you've done in the interim here.
This is Veronica, I agree, I had the same comments that I appreciate your efforts in trying and reducing the height is definitely beneficial as well. Are you proposing putting gutters on there? Are you planning on putting gutters on your construction when it's all complete?
We certainly would, yep.
You'd be open to that?
Yes, that help with any runoff off of the peak.
This is Ken. The height has been an issue with this and the drawing that you have provided, both the sketch and the actual survey, lists some elevation numbers. And it seems you, there's two sets of numbers for ordinary high watermark and then you use, you say you use these new set of NAVD as your baseline and that's what you show in your drawing? And those aren't the same numbers that we would typically use?
What's the NAVD?
Well, I'm just reading off the drawing and your drawing shows the high point elevation 1441.20 and that relates to what are called NGVD, it's confusing to me too.
Right.
So I just want to make sure that the baseline and the elevation baseline system we're all in agreement with.
Right, my understanding from the surveyor sir was that the current elevation right now of where the structure starts, the new building would be no higher than that for the floor, for the slab that will be poured. Because it will be a slab.
Slab on grade.
Slab on grade. And that the elevation for where the slab on grade will be is the exact elevation of where the current cabin starts, right now.
So this 1441.72 baseline, or I'm sorry, that lake, 1441.07 baseline is what you're using?
The 1451.07?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
That's the high side right now.
That's the high side.
Okay. And I think maybe just for the record, the Hidden Village Association has approved you doing this?
Yes, yep, and we submitted the letter that the association took a vote and passed unanimously from the members to increase.
And that the CUP does not provide for any alternate location, so you have no ability to move the location. And the construction personnel looked said it would be not advisable to dig down because of impact to adjacent cabins. So you really have no choice but to go up.
Yes.
And you're changing the not pretty blue color?
Yeah, we're changing the color.
That will be charcoal gray.
Just down the block, so I drive by, you can't miss it, so.
People use that as navigation on the lake to know where they're at.
It's easy to describe.
Yes.
Okay, that's all the questions I have, Mike.
Other questions or comments from the Board? At this time, I'll open for public comment. Hearing no public comment, I'll close public comment. Anyone ready to make a motion?
This is Veronica, I can make a motion. As I am open to the amended version as well, the 20 by 20 by 17, so I propose that.
Veronica, can you speak into the microphone so I could hear?
Sure, yes sir. I make a motion to approve the amended variance application for the 20 by 20 by 17 structure with the condition that gutters are to be installed to direct the stormwater runoff away from the lake. And I accept the findings of facts.
Veronica, could I add that in addition to the new construction, they're allowed to replace the existing deck at its current footprint?
Yeah, absolutely, that's a given though, correct? Yeah, yeah, absolutely, we can add that to that.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
This is Ken, I will second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Veronica, a second by Ken to approve the amended application to rebuild a 20 by 20 times 17 height footprint with the conditions that the gutters be installed and directed, water directed away from the lake and this does include replacing the deck in its current size and location. And we accept the findings of, staff findings of fact. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
This is Veronica, I vote aye.
This is Mike, vote aye, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening.
Next, we have variance application 2-V-22 by Starlight Bay Resort LLC, part of Government Lot 6, Section 12, and part of the Northwest Corridor, the Northwest Corridor and of the Government Lot 1, Section 13, Township 140, Range 33, Nevis Township on 8th Crowing Lake, a recreational development lake. Parcels 21.12.01210 and 21.1201310 and 21.1300400 and 21.1300500. Applicants are requesting a variance from Section 1013.7.C of the Shoreline Management Ordinance to exceed the allowed number of spaces provided for continuous beaching, mooring, or docking of watercraft. Good evening, state your names and address for the record and then explain to the Board what you're asking for.
Good evening, this is Dale Schroder, owner of Starlight Bay Resort. Address is 27155, County 33, Nevis, Minnesota, 56467. And this is Brittany Barrett, my fiancee. What we are looking to do is add more spaces on the lake. When we purchased the property, I believe we went over this back when it was tabled back in February. We were under the assumption that we had the spaces that were on the lake and we were informed that we needed a permit to continue to use those. We were allowed one per cabin, one for our home when we were at the meeting when it was tabled. I'm not exactly sure how much more, I mean, we went over a lot of this back then. If there's something we missed when we were at the site evaluation. We have also offered to give up. We were allowed to add 23 additional RV sites. We are proposing to give up up to 19 of those to get more sites on the lake so that our patrons do not have to put their boats in the lake, pull them out, put them in the lake. If you're there for a seven-day stay, it'd be nice to be able to stay there, enjoy the cabin, enjoy the lake, and not have to move a boat in and out.
Hey, thank you. To make sure I have this correct for the record, what you're asking for is 24 more slips?
Not 24 more, we have, we currently have 11. We would like a total of 24.
A total of 24 slips of?
I'm sorry, 26, so it'd be, with the 11, we'd be adding?
Additional 13.
Additional 13? 26 and 11 is?
24, they dropped it.
I thought we dropped it down to 24.
I thought you dropped, that's my understanding, you dropped it to 24 from 26?
So we would only be adding 13 more slips.
So you're adding?
And Mike, I want to clarify, it's 22 guest spaces.
And two for our rentals.
For their rental boats.
Yes. Because currently, we have none of our rentals in where, when we have a guest, currently, we are letting them use our spot on the lake. So, we can't rent our boats out at the moment, does that make?
Okay, so I'm going to state this again, just to make sure we're all on the same page. You're proposing to add 24, a total of 24 slips, which is 13 additional.
13 additional.
Of those 24, 22 are for guests and two would be for the rental boats.
Rental boats, yes.
And in return for that, what consideration, you're willing to drop 19 of the?
19 of the 23 additional RV spaces, yes.
Okay.
Up two, I mean, if you'll take less, that would be great, you know? But, I mean, I'm basically giving up, I mean, I know this doesn't matter, but 19 spaces at $2,500 a piece, we're giving up $47,500 a year in income and taxes to the county to have more spaces on the lake.
Questions or comments from the Board?
And I don't know whether this is, and we may end up putting this as a condition, but that the location and number of slips will be per the drawing in the application that's listed as Page 97 of 135.
Correct, we would be losing dock, the dock on this side would stay the same and we would be losing, it'd be 2, 4, 6, 8, 10, 12. I think we'd be losing one of, one of the docks going out on the south.
I believe it was.
Since we dropped it from what we originally asked, 2, 4, 2. It'd be 2, 4, 6, 8, 10, 12, 14, 16, 18, 20, 22, 24. So that last spot towards the boat landing would not be there.
So that's the west side?
It would be, well, it'd be on that end.
Yes, the west side.
Yes.
West side, okay.
Sorry, I'm not sure where I'm sitting in the building.
Which one are they dropping the?
West, the west?
The one closest to the boat launch.
Closest to?
The boat launch.
Oh, okay, we were there, which says slip nine and 10?
So there'd basically be 12 slips on each one, so it'd be a total of 24.
So the one that says cabin nine and 10?
Cabin five and six.
Well, it'd be the personal, this be, it says personal slip there. That one would be no longer there and then, because it goes rental, rental, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 10. So this whole?
That whole end section.
No, no.
It would be, yeah, it would actually be shorter and lose a slip on either side of that last one towards the boat launch.
That last finger would disappear.
Well, the drawing you show.
Is that labeled cabin nine and 10 on the drawing?
This one right here?
Yeah, there's nine and 10, it's supposed to be, yep.
Yep.
Okay, just, so Ken, you're correct, it's this one right here.
My apologies, Ken.
Doesn't add up to me then.
But they're also?
You got 12 slips there, two on each, each extension, 2, 4, 6, 8, 10, 12, and then I got 2, 4, 6, 8, 10, 12, and the other one, and you showed the two rental. So that drawing, what am I not seeing? That drawing shows actually what you're asking for.
Nine and 10 over to the other dock, we're adding, because when you come out, we had that one dock out.
Oh.
There's only 10 slips over there currently because we're only allowed 11.
Okay.
So we would be adding that one slip back over on that other dock, so there would be 12 on each side.
So nine and 10 or whatever, or the rental ones would move over to the dock?
Yes.
To the right?
Yes.
How do we, okay.
So it'd be 12 slips on both docks, two entrances to the lake. We would run all the way across, but with the beach there, it makes it hard for the kids to get out to the play area.
So the end result is 12 and 12, 12?
Yeah.
Okay.
Other questions or comments from the Board?
How many feet of shoreline do you have?
1,450.
1,450. Okay, so that's, that's how we get to about the 10 or 11 lactus slips, okay? Sorry.
I am correct, aren't I, Eric, 1,450?
We can measure it here.
I believe that's what we got on our purchase when we purchased it.
As a point of interest, do you have any idea how many boat docking slips the resort next door to you has?
I do not, he did not have all of his docks in and they have a bunch of their lifts on the beach currently and they're still dock, they're still putting docks in. They have the baseball team from Nevis come up and put it in, so it's a very timely situation.
I was trying to do a comparison for you and it seems they have about 35 guest spots and that's what you're also asking for.
Well, we're asking for 24 guest spots, basically.
No, no, I'm talking about cabins and RV sites, combination is 35.
He also has?
35, when I add them up.
Close to 80 RV spots, close to 80 RV spots.
80?
Close to, he just put in 20 more behind us.
That's not what he advertises, does he have approval?
Building them, he just bought 30 acres, well, I can't really say, I mean, he did buy.
I guess that's not really relevant to what we're looking at here.
We do have different sizes, different amounts of lakeshore also. I mean, we're not trying to use all of our lakeshore up, but we are trying to accommodate that, yes. Say you come to a cabin, you have A and you have B. If cabin A with this resort says, we have a cabin, you have a spot on the lake. Cabin B, myself, you come there, sorry, you don't get a slip, you have to put your boat in every time you want to use it and you're on vacation, where are you going to go, A or B? I'm just trying to make things better for my guests versus making more money. That's why I'm offering up these spaces up on the hill versus making more money or making my guests comfortable.
This is Veronica.
It does.
This is Veronica, I have a question, if you could just, for clarification purposes, how many RV spots do you have available currently?
We currently have 21 spots available.
Okay, and how many cabins?
10.
And any other living quarters?
Just our home.
Okay, so you have the 21, and so, and in the 21 RV spots currently?
Currently.
What tier are they in?
Air in tier 3.
Okay, tier 3.
Tier 3, right?
Yes, because I believe tier 4 is just the corner of the one property, I might not have that.
So the spots that you're giving up are currently non-existent?
They're non-existent, yes.
Okay, so they're just potential spots?
Potential spots, yes.
Okay.
Yes, so I'm, that's why I said, potentially $47,500 in income. If we put these spots in, if I give up 19 times 20, $500 each, that's $47,500 just to have more spaces on the lake.
At this time, I'm going to open for public comment. Hearing none, I'll close public comment.
This is Veronica, I have another comment, so Eric, this question's for you. Currently with the applicant's position, he is meeting all capacity. He's not over capacity at all with his CUP, is that correct?
With the conditional use for the campground, correct.
Correct, yeah. My concern is, is the applicant is not over capacity. There are a lot of resorts over there around Hubbard County that are over capacity and density greatly and we're going to short him even more just so he can have boat slips. I understand giving up a few, that's a nice trade, but maybe we? I understand giving up a few, that's a nice trade, but maybe we can reduce the number a bit, 13 for 13 instead of all 19?
I agree, myself, this is Timothy, I don't think everybody that camps is coming to use that lake. Camping is short everywhere.
So that's, I just, the applicant is already, I mean, they're not over capacity on their density, so I don't want to reduce what he does currently have. I understand he needs more slips, he has space for more slips. He, I mean, we saw that during our lot views, the proposal that he has will fit adequately. I just think maybe, in my opinion, we could reduce that trade-off, because I greatly appreciate the trade-off, but maybe we can reduce it.
What are you proposing?
I'm proposing that reducing his, instead of taking 19 slots from him, that maybe we just do 13, 13 for 13.
Wait a minute. Oh, number of?
RV sites, the number of RV sites, instead of, he said he's willing to do 19, but Veronica's suggesting that he's not over capacity and that we do an even 13 RV sites for the 13 proposed new slips.
I am not in favor of that.
Well, it still has to go in front of the commissioners, no matter what we?
I, uh?
This is Timothy, I'm in favor of it.
It's just not fair to the applicant.
It's, because of the business that he needs.
They bought, they bought it, obviously did the financial analysis based on what's there. My side of concern is, when you take this resort and the resort next year, next door, you will probably have 60 to 75 percent of the entire boat traffic on that lake coming from those two resorts. It's a small lake, so providing the opportunity for more load on the lake, I, I'm not in favor of expanding, expanding it, so, just my opinion. I think what they've done is very good, very nice, very appropriate. The number of RV sites is consistent with what the calculations would now be. Right, Eric? If I got, the, the reduction of 19 brings them back in line with what would be allowed by new calculations in the third and fourth tier, if I read right. So, and they, and I think it's been environmental services' desire to bring that back into compliance, so, and I think we're being generous. Have to keep in mind, if you were green fielding this, they'd be allowed five boat slips, no, 10 boat slips only. We're doubling that, so, not that I'm against it, and I want the resorts to survive. If we, if we've, if we didn't approve this, they'd probably be out of business, which is not what we want, but I don't see us going beyond that, my opinion.
Uh, this is Timothy speaking, also, you made the mention that he, he bought it, he knew what he was buying, but he, he wouldn't have known what his gross capacity could have been, just like I wouldn't know. That's why you would be here asking. And, so I would want to get as much as I could for revenue for this business, myself.
And this is Veronica speaking, the applicant also has demonstrated that there were boat slips out there prior to purchasing, even though there's not documentation, they were possibly put in, you know, at that time period that we didn't see, we don't have visual aerial imaging. Again, I just, it's just hard, it's just one of those situations, it's, I don't want to take away from the applicant what he already has as far as capacities for the RV sites. I mean, like I said, just reducing it by six is just definitely a number I put out there, even 13 for 13.
This is Mike, I, I would be in agreement that I think, instead of the total 19, it, it gives him six additional ones. He's not keeping the entire 19. I think based on the history and, and at least what I saw and what they're attempting to do at that resort and update and, and definitely, to me, it appeared they're really paying attention to the shoreline and trying to keep it as whole as possible. I guess I'd also be fine with 13 for 13 switch. If anyone's ready to make a motion at this time?
Before you do that?
Go ahead, Ken.
Eric, back to the, the fact that there's a conflict between the current number of 44 RV sites and what would be allowed by current ordinance, the reducing of 19 brings it in compliance with that. And if we add more, then it will still continue to be, how should I say it, legally but non-conforming or as such. But if we stayed with the 19 reduction, it would, it would be consistent with what the current shoreline management ordinance is. Okay?
Correct. Anyone ready to make a motion? Oh, go ahead.
Um, the, when the, when the RV sites, the current ones were put up there, the sites were smaller. They have made them larger, so with what we've got, the new sites only have to be 2,000 square feet. So I've still got two acres back there that I could slide those spots into. They don't have to have boats, we don't have to advertise them with boats. So, I mean?
Just a clarification for your and the board's benefit. Department of Health requires 2,000 square feet?
2,000 square feet, yes.
The county shoreline ordinance requires 3,000 square feet.
Okay.
Just want you to be aware.
Right, but the ones that are up there are already grandfathered in, I wouldn't have to change the sizes. I'm only putting in, like she said, if I, if I kept nine, I have to give each one of those 3,000 square feet.
When those were installed, the 3,000 square foot requirement was in effect?
So they were done wrong, so I'm paying for that too.
So this is, this is Timothy, is, is the entire property inside the 1,000 feet or is there any acreage outside of the 1,000 feet?
It's all within 1,000.
Let me turn the layer on for you, Tim.
I missed out on the air layer.
No worries. I have some that's not.
So you got a corner there?
I have a corner. And the spots I was going to put in was just going to be a few just along that, that wood line there on the opposite side of, I don't want to take the woods away, there are walking paths in there. You know, kids do play back there, they do, you know, they have run their bicycles through there, so I mean, like I said, I'm willing to give up the 19 to do, to do the 25, if that's what it's going to take. But I do appreciate that.
We have a motion.
Whoa, you made one? No one's made one yet?
No.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve, I guess I would call this the amended application for Sarlott Bay Resort. That includes 24 docking spaces, 22 guest spaces, two rental spaces per the drawing submitted with the application on page 97 of 135, where two slips are moved from the west dock to the east dock, that the applicants dropped 90, 19 RV spaces and therefore are allowed 25. And I guess that's it.
Do I have a second?
Is he going to accept the findings of facts?
Are you accepting the findings of fact, Ken?
Uh, yes, I think, yes, 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 yes. I want to, I want to, now that we've had this discussion, we should make sure that they are. Give me a second. No, findings of fact, it says, the request is now for an additional 15 slips for a total of 26, so that should be 13 slips and 24 total? Item one, should I read it out totally then? Read it, let me read it. Is this variance in harmony with the general purposes and intent of official controls? Oops, wait a minute. Oops, that's the older one.
I think, I think the one I have, Ken, is, it does say 13 slips.
Yeah, okay, I was, I was flipped to the wrong one here. Let me, um, yeah, 13 slips, by not installing the 19 RV sites of property we have brought into compliance with the ordinance, dwelling unit density provisions three and four, okay, yes. Findings of fact of the May 23rd Board of Adjustment staff report.
Do I have a second? Hearing none, we'll need to readdress it. I'll make a motion that we approve the request as proposed. So we have a total of 24 slips and that's adding 13 slips and that is, to do that, he will give up, they will give up 13 potential RV sites and retain the other, the others for future development if they desire and accept the staff findings of fact with the corrections of 13 wherever 19 RV sites are given up.
This is Veronica, I second the motion.
And we have a motion by Mike, a second by Veronica, to accept the, uh, adding of 13 slips in return for elimination of 13 potential RV sites and we accepted the board, or the findings of fact with some adjustments to reflect the 13. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
Well, I want to make sure that we have corrected all the findings of facts, the 19 and 13.
I, I think I covered that by saying wherever it says 19, to change to 13.
So that changes two, three?
Yep, one, two, three.
Four, all of those change. If you're okay with that, then I am. Just don't want any confusion down the streets. This is Ken, I vote, I vote nay.
Veronica, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
This is Mike, I vote aye, motion carries three to one, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll move on to new business variance application 4-V-22 by David and Cheryl Austin, part of government lot seven, section 25, township 144, range 32, Hart Lake Township on Steamboat Lake, a recreational development lake, partial 10.25.01300. Applicants are requesting a variance from section 507.4, item three of the shoreline management ordinance, to exceed the four-foot maximum height allowed for a fence with the ordinary high watermark setback. Please state your name and address for the record and then explain to the board what you're asking for.
My name is Cheryl Austin, my husband David, our address is 41456 Pine Wood Lane, La Porte. Um, what we're looking to do is put up a fence for separation between our permanent home and the neighbors who have turned their home into an Airbnb. It's our hope to put from the high watermark, 75 feet in, the allowable four feet and then from 75 to 100 and on, increase it to eight feet. And the reason for that is, the two houses, the main doors face each other, they're about 60 feet apart and during that 25-foot area that we're asking for a variance, it's where all of our family gathering stuff is. It's our barbecue, our picnic tables, our hot tubs, green porch and whatnot. So, we are hoping to have a little more privacy in that area. The rental property has been rented, to our knowledge, already to seven or eight different people. The owners of the Airbnb have the property under, I think it's a 1031, where they can only be on site for two weeks out of the year. So the other 50 weeks are the weeks that we're concerned about and wanting privacy, since this is our permanent home. And we have talked with the other neighbors and they are fine with that. And in fact, the owners of the Airbnb did send us a message that said they understand our need for privacy in that 25 feet. So the variance we're asking for is just that 75 foot to 100 feet, is that?
That's correct.
They also asked us, with the fence going down to the high watermark, if we would build a fence, like a rail-type fence?
Like vertical and horizontal instead of vertical. I know that's not, I mean, it's not what we're here for, but?
Exactly, we're just trying to?
Be fair on what they wanted, and they also wanted to know what color we were making it and, you know, a few things.
Which is a concern.
Sure, and it'll be just like our deck, and we sent them pictures, it's a light brown, very nature-friendly.
Thank you, questions or comments from the board?
This is Veronica speaking, I just wanted to note that during the lot view, I observed the lake from the neighboring property in relation to the proposed eight-foot fence between that 75-foot ordinary high watermark and the 100-foot ordinary high watermark. And the view of the lake will be minimally reduced for them if this grant, if this variance is granted. But the location, the proposed location of the fence was also going to be placed in that tree line, so when leaf-on conditions are full, the, the obstruction, the view is already going to be slightly obstructed. So I am supportive of this request. And I just wanted to state for the record that I did not see any objections or public comments, or written comment. All right, sorry about public, but?
This is Timothy, how, how far off the property line were you going to put that?
We want to be able to walk on both sides of it.
One foot and a half.
So probably, yeah.
Okay, so there'd be enough room for you to maintain the other side if you needed to?
Yeah, absolutely, and we did have it surveyed, so we have that, which I think you have a copy of. So we have the exact property line.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments from the board?
Uh, just, this is Ken, one of the prime reasons for the lower fence in the 100-foot setback is to not, is for you, so that neighbors' view of the lake is not affected. I think it was pretty clear when I was out there that, that, that 25 feet at eight feet absolutely has no impact on the neighbors being able to observe the lake.
At this time, I'll open for public comment. Hearing none, I'll close public comment. Anyone ready to make a motion?
This is Veronica, I make a motion to approve the application and accept the staff's findings of facts.
This is Timothy, I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Veronica and a second by Timothy to approve the application and accept the staff findings of fact, Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
This is Veronica, I vote aye.
This is Mike, I vote aye, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have variance application 5-V-22 by Penny Westfall, part of government lot four, section 24, township 141, range 34, Lake Emma Township on Gilmore Lake, a recreational development lake, partial 16.24.02000. Applicant is requesting a variance from part one, section 702 of the shoreline management ordinance for a proposed addition to the non-conforming dwelling located in the shore impact zone and part two, section 502.2 of the SMO for proposed platform and accessory structure to be located within the 100-foot ordinary high watermark and 10-foot side lot structure setbacks. Please state your name and address for the record and then explain to the board what you're asking.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Edith Westfall, Penny is a nickname, so it's, the land is in Edith Westfall. My residence is four twenty-five Fourth Avenue in Van Meter, Iowa, and my address and park in Hubbard County is two oh eight three-three Harmony Road, Park Rapids. Making a request for a variance approval to add a porch on the backside of the cabin toward the frontage road. Uh, the purpose of that is to prevent rainwater from coming down and going down into the foundation area to take it away from the cabin further. And the second request then is a cement slab to put a potential gazebo on, twelve by sixteen foot.
Thank you. Just so we're all on the same page, um, I would like to address the two, uh, items separately. And, and we'll first go with the addition to the cabin itself and then on to the other, uh, platform that you're proposing. Questions or comments from the board?
Just for clarification, and I know you sent a drawing, it's, it's an open porch? Just an entrance porch, not screened in, not closed in, uh, just a, um, an entryway porch?
Correct.
Okay.
Other questions or comments from the board?
No, this is Veronica speaking, I just wanted to comment that I think the request is reasonable. I, I'm not opposed to the covered porch.
This is Mike, um, at this time, I'm going to open for public comment just on the first item. Hearing none, I'll close public comment. I think the request is reasonable to have a covered entryway on that side. Uh, with it being open, I think it has minimal impacts and I would be in favor of it also.
This is Ken, just a comment. You know, you said you, you indicated you had foundation issues because of runoff. There's no gutter on the backside of the house there. I would, I can't put it in the recommendation, but I would recommend you put a gutter on that backside and downspouts uh, so that it doesn't reoccur in any way.
Yes, actually, no gutters anywhere around the...
Yeah.
The structure.
And this is Veronica, I would definitely highly suggest that too, especially on that second level. That'd be very beneficial for you.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments from the board? At this time, I'll make a motion that we approve part one and accept the staff findings of fact.
Would you like to specify that it's an eight-by-eighteen covered porch? And the application only applies to the cabin as it currently exists in its current location?
Right, I'll accept that.
This is Veronica, I second the motion.
We have a motion by Mike, a second by Veronica to approve and accept the staff findings of fact for a eight-by-eighteen covered porch. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
This is Veronica, I vote aye.
This is Mike, I vote aye, motion carries. We'll now move on to the platform and accessory structure. When I look at this, um, it appears to me that there's alternatives, uh, on this lot where you could put a gazebo and, and if not meet, I, I think you could meet the setbacks, but if not, uh, considerably further back than what the proposal is. So I think that's where my thoughts are on, on this, this concrete platform you're proposing.
This is Veronica speaking, I do have a question. During the lot views, Mike, we were unsure the road right-of-way setback. So I'm not really sure where the road right-of-way setback falls in her property with being able to meet all setbacks to build that in between that garage space and the cabin. I'm, I'm, I'm just uncertain that it can be met fully.
Yeah, I'm not, I, I'd agree, I'm not sure, but I think it could be considerably better than what's being proposed.
Yeah, I, I definitely would propose that the applicant step away from the side lot line for sure, and if there's possibilities to moving it back. It appears by your application that you were placing it right in front of your garage and the same width that you were trying to keep things in line.
Yes.
Um, but since the garage is already possibly, um, I don't want to say in violation because I'm not sure, you know, it's origination date when it was, you know, constructed. But since it's already within the side lot line as well, since you've indicated on your application that it's only six and a half feet from the side lot line, I definitely would not be open to proposing this gazebo to be built six feet from the side lot line either when we could move it over a bit. I understand where you were wanting to keep things in place, but ordinance-wise, I think we should, we would definitely want to move it over and out of the side, side lot line. I'm not sure if we can meet this back one, it looks like we're getting some measurements here.
Yeah, the garage, just for information purposes, was, uh, there when we bought the, uh, the land in nineteen seventy-seven. Now, I can't tell you how much before nineteen seventy-seven it was put up, but we didn't, we didn't put it up.
So you're just marking the twenty-foot setback for us?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. So with the tree coverage, we really don't see where the garage is located, correct? It's, that's it there. So basically, it could possibly fit right next to the garage.
This is Timothy, I agree with you Veronica on that. I don't see it harming anything with the topography of that hill sloping back away from the lake, so it's...
Yeah, just off the side, lot line would be appropriate for sure and only, you know, only need the one setback, but...
And part of the thought was just as long as we're coming in, we would make a, ask a, ask about, make a request. Uh, I don't know if it'd be appropriate to withdraw the application because it's, it's a luxury item. And then re, reapply if decided to move somewhere else. I'm not sure what the procedures would be best for yourselves.
Well, I think for the board, uh, it, it does not matter whether we address it now and, and, or, or later. It, it's up to the applicant to decide how they want to move, if they wanted to withdraw it or not. Eric, do you want to comment on?
Yeah, the thing to keep in mind is, you certainly can withdraw it and, uh, reapply at some future point. If the board takes action tonight and say they would deny this, there is a provision in the ordinance that says you must wait a year from that date before you reapply unless you make a significant enough change to the proposal, that it would then be worth the board's reconsideration, in which point you could then submit a following application again within that year. But those would be the things to be taken into consideration.
And of course, part one is still valid, the previous thing.
Yes, yes, that's what I was thinking, I was hearing, and this, as I said, this was just, well, let's put it out there and see what the requirements are.
So this is Veronica speaking, is this measurement that you have currently on the screen, the hundred-foot setback, can you put both measurements, the, that you had previously on there with the road right-of-way setback with that?
No, I can do one at a time.
Okay, but, so it's fair to say by what you had earlier that there's possibly not space then? Because you're hun, then we're going to have to have a variance regardless, it appears, from that picture.
Now pull it to the lake, Eric. Oh, you lose that, huh?
Yeah. Yeah, but see, there's only...
How'd you do it, or go to area and try that, did that work? Or then you wouldn't get the measurement? Because you were showing the, the shoreline for the previous guy, you donned it.
Yeah, that just shows the shoreline extent of the thousand feet, I think.
But my point is here, he's showing us a hundred feet there, and then when he went back to do the twenty-foot setback, there isn't room for both.
Right.
They overlap, they wouldn't be able to put it there and they would have to get a variance for one or the other.
But there is room to move it off of, meet the lot line.
The current garage is about a hundred feet from the lake, right? Per the sketch, I don't know if, uh...
I'm guessing at the southern edge of it because of the tree cover obscuring. The tree cover doesn't let me get exact as to where it's...
I was, I'm going by the drawing that shows seventy-four feet to the proposed location for the shed. It's sixteen feet, and when we were out there, um, uh, it appeared to me that with that, the space between the two could, would be about ten feet, so, close to it. So anything closer than the garage on that side to lake would be within the hundred feet.
Other questions or comments from the board?
I wasn't quite sure where Veronica was coming from. Were you proposing the possibility of, of building it where it is, but putting it ten feet off the property line?
And possibly reducing the size. The applicant was open to reducing the size a bit, because I know she was wanting to try to keep things in line, it appeared from her application, so she could still reduce the size, keep it in line if she wanted, and still move it ten feet over.
Yeah.
Would you be open to that, reducing your structure?
Yes, yes.
Making sure you meet the ten-foot setback off the neighboring property line?
Yes.
That's the only thing I was looking at, the topography is nice, it, it, there's a plenty of screen cover, the way it dips down, it's not going to be that noticeable. Um, there's questionable set, meeting setbacks on the side there. It looks like it's a possibility, but we're not one hundred percent.
The, the shed that's on the opposite side of the property, you said it was a fish shed or a fish...
A fish shack, yes, fish shed.
That's not something you'd give up in turn, uh, to put a gazebo there?
Not as long as we're cleaning fish.
No, not as long as you're cleaning fish, okay.
We'll give the gazebo up first before...
The point I'm getting at that is, I'm not sure there's any other reasonable location than the one that we proposed off the, off the sideline. It's not an obtrusive, uh, uh, kinds of structure.
And their property line is, the lake, according to the applicant's picture, the water, it changes a bit, so the...
Yes.
The setbacks change as you go towards the house.
Yes.
Because if you can't, you, you, so you can't build a left, you don't want to build in front of the house. The only space you have is, uh, would be to the left of the garage, and that pretty well blocks up the whole thing.
Yes.
So I, I think it kind of comes down to either, you know, deny it and there's not much choice, or we look at it in a practical sense that it's not real, it's not ugly. It's an open, just sitting area. And for the location, if I recall the topography, uh, water runs away from the lake, so on, so... I, I guess what I'm saying is, I'm probably neutral, depends upon what my colleagues think about allowing it, I don't know.
Well, this was, as I said, an exploration of what would be possible. So I certainly am willing to withdraw part two of the application at this time, taking your comments in mind. And then, if that becomes what we would like to create, we would file an application again to see if a variance is needing, needed.
You said, Eric, she has a year to come back with an alternate plan without a reapplication?
Has, has to wait one year before she can reapply.
If you deny.
I'm sorry.
If we deny.
Oh, if we deny, she has to wait a year.
Or you could allow her to be tabled on this item, put it on next month's agenda and then direct her to make... Proper whatever adjustments based on your feedback from tonight, that would be an option as well. Or you could make the modifications now and take action to approve something amended.
You understand, did you, did you understand what you're saying?
I'm, I'm wondering, rather than tabling this one or having her withdraw at this time, a discussion with my, my colleagues here is that I think we could, if I understand it right, maybe reduce the size a little bit, meet the side lot setback and then let it, let it be as, with the understanding that it's an open gazebo, so the visual impacts are, are quite minimal.
Yeah, how would you...
Yeah, and if I may, procedurally, before the board would begin that conversation, I would recommend that we see if there's any public comment on part two.
Okay, at this time, I'll open for public comment on part two. Hearing none, I close public comment on part two.
This is Veronica speaking, given the applicant has commented that she is open to meeting the side lot line setback and reducing the structure to, you know, to best meet the needs here, I, I am open to moving forward and moving, you know, with this application and not have, not, not tabling it, or not denying.
This is Timothy, I agree.
Okay.
What would you propose then for, you say reduce size, I can understand the, away from the lot line, what would you, uh, propose that they can build anything up to twelve by sixteen? Um, but ten feet away from the lake, how, how would you, is that the way?
This is Veronica, I'm okay with that size as long as it meets the setback. I know just from the applicant's, um, site plan, it appeared that she wanted it in line with the garage. And if she wants to still maintain it in line, then you can reduce the size and still make it in there as long as you keep it ten feet off. So it's obviously going to be a little bit closer, or I mean, you know...
Right.
Over on that one side, but visually, it's going to be the same if you reduce it enough.
I guess I'd be in...
If you don't want the same size, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, I didn't want to... I would say I'd be in favor of approving it up to twelve by sixteen feet as long as the side lot is met. Is everyone seem good with that?
This is Veronica speaking, I'm okay with that too, and as long as she doesn't go any closer, we, we stick at the seventy-four OHW as well.
Well, and not any closer than to the lake.
Definitely, yeah, that's what I meant, yeah.
The thing is that, that seventy-four feet, we don't know what that is. That was not been measured by the environmental services. I, I'd kind of fall on the side of asking if she'd like to table this for a month and then come back with a specific recommendation for location and that we would actually know how close to the lake it really is. I'd, I'd, I'd rather have a, here's a piece of paper that defines exactly what she wants to build and where, uh, instead of us trying to work around this now, uh, you know, in the future, somebody else, who knows? So, um...
I understand your concerns, Ken.
She could table for more than one month, she could table for a couple of months if she wanted more time.
If we would get her, if she would be willing to sign a indefinite time extension form, otherwise, the sixty-day rule would probably warrant action at the next meeting.
So we can't just approve this and say, stay seventy-five feet from the OHW and ten feet from the side lot line and build it to X amount of square footage?
I'd be fine with that.
And, and if, this is Veronica speaking, if it would be helpful for Ken, we could have her, um, we could put a condition on it that staff needs to do the measurement if it would be helpful for you.
I'm okay if that's what you want to do. I'm, I'm just thinking, what's easiest for her to just come back and say, here it is, and then we have it on a thing? We have a new set of, we have a new set of findings of facts that are consistent with what she's proposing. It's easier, but this is not a ugly, uh, or, or a thing that's going to have any major impact to the lake or so on. So I'm okay if somebody or what else wants to make the motion and being very specific about what we're allowing and the new findings of fact, I'll buy into that.
Okay. Penny, this is Veronica speaking, I have a question for you. So you did mention, like I said earlier at the lot views, that you were, this was kind of one of those that you just received a picture of?
Correct.
And that you really hadn't explored one hundred percent your options, that you were just looking at this, and you're open to reducing it. Would you be willing then to table the application? We would not deny it, we would ta... Would you be willing then to table the application? We would not deny it. We would table the application, give you time to pick exactly which one you want, have the Environmental Services Department come out and measure the, that's what you're looking for. Measure the location, so that it could be specific. Would you be open to that? And meeting the ten-foot side lot line?
I would be open to that, yes. I am out of the country from June tenth to June twenty-sixth, so.
So, there is a, an app, a form that you can sign that would give you a little bit of an extension that Eric can explain.
Okay. That's what I prefer.
Okay. As long as the applicant is okay with that, then I will make the motion that we table this with the understanding that before it's brought back, specifics will be brought, drawings will be brought about size. Meeting the side lock setback, and consulting with Environmental Services to get the exact location, and how far from the lake it would be constructed, and it would be a unlimited?
Well, if I, if I may procedurally, I've got the form here. I'll fill it out quick. Give it to Penny, so she can read it, and if she agrees, we can get that signed prior to your.
Okay.
Taking action, so then we've got that.
Okay.
Okay.
We can then go until the.
We will stand by until you fill it out?
Just a second here. You may certainly read it. It basically says that you're giving the county as much time as is needed for them to complete their review and action on the second part of your application. Thanks.
Then we still need a motion? Are we sufficient with the signing of that?
I think, just to enter for the record for the meeting, board, what Penny just signed was the indefinite time extension form, granting the county as much time as needed to complete its actions, so. I think it would probably still be appropriate for the board to make a motion to table with those instructions as to what you would like her to submit.
Okay.
And then if you're tentatively looking at the July meeting due to her being out of country, and for the June meeting, that would be good to document too.
Okay. So, when would you be available again?
I come back into the country on June twenty-sixth.
Would you rather it wait longer than July? Would you rather go into August, or what would be your preference?
I would say July.
July would be fine. Okay, I will make the motion that we table part two of the application. With the understanding that the county will come out and measure the distance from the lake, and that any new proposal would meet the side lot setbacks.
This is Veronica. I second the motion.
Motion by Mike, second by Veronica, to table this until July. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy. I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken. I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
Veronica, I vote aye.
This is Mike. I vote aye, would table part two. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda, variance application six dash V dash two-two by Lawrence and Mary Farber, unit three Paradise Cove. Common interest, community number twenty, section twenty-four, township one forty. Range thirty-four, Henrietta Township on Lake Beltane, a recreational development lake. Parcel one three point eight zero point zero zero three zero zero. Applicants are requesting a variance from section seven zero two, the shoreline management ordinance for a proposed enlargement of a non-conforming residential structure located in the shore impact zone. Please state your name and address for the record, and then explain to the board what you're asking.
I go by Larry, Larry Farber, two five five one four, twelfth street west, Zimmerman, Minnesota, five five three nine eight. And our cabin is one eight nine four five Eden Point Drive, Nevis, Minnesota.
I'm Mary Farber. Do I need to say anything else? Same address?
Same address, no, that's fine.
Can I just say I'm feeling a good vibe here? It's so serious.
Hey, if you would explain to the board what you're asking for.
Well.
My voice is really bad.
Okay. Well, right now, we have a porch or whatever deck that's added on, or it's a permanent structure added on to the cabin. And one of the things that we are asking is, can we close that in? We'll put gutters on it, and redirect whatever we need to do for closing in the deck. And then the other part?
Yeah.
Oh, and then the other part was. We wanted to actually get rid of our, we have vaulted ceiling. Flatten that out and put a second level on the cabin. And just keep it all open. We did want another bathroom up there, but otherwise, it would just be all open up there. And we'd, we'd lose the, um. There's the one bedroom that's already, there's two bedrooms down there. We would get rid of the one bedroom, and then just keep it all open up on the second half.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the board?
Has the, I assume they have an association for this planned unit development?
Yes.
Have they?
Agreed?
Approved?
Well, we didn't have.
Have you approached them about?
Yes.
That?
There hasn't been a formal vote, but no one is objected.
Speak to the microphone, please.
I'm sorry. There hasn't been a formal vote, and the meeting is next week, but no one's objected.
Okay. Have, have any of the other, there's a lot of cabins there. Have any of the other ones done expansions of any magnitude, those that are in the shore impact zone, any of them done any expansions like you're proposing?
No, we have the smallest cabin in the whole association, and.
One was looking to expand, but he, he was going to add a basement, but then it was very expensive what they wanted to do, so he tabled that, or didn't do it.
Is, is, this is a seasonal cabin?
Right now, it is, yeah.
And you intend to maintain it as a seasonal?
We would like to make it year-round, if we could. Can I mention, we owned the, we owned a lot? Just.
We owned lots, we owned lots, six, just up.
Was it six or five? Oh, whatever. We did own a lot, that was two, two lots over, and we were going to build on that. And we were told that they had changed everything, that it was going, now it was going to be two stories. You could build two stories now, and we ran into some complications with that. We, our original plan, we had it all approved, and we got a building permit. And then we ran into a snag when we went to get variance. Because we wanted to get rid of a little jog that was on it, and. Oh, my.
I'll explain it. I'll explain it. I mean, if you'd like to hear, because the reason we're in the position we're in with our little cabin is, we knew what we were getting into with the cabin, but we had originally bought lot six on that one eight nine three five Eden Point Drive. And before we purchased, we went out to Environmental Services, and we asked how big of cabin we could build there, and could we go two stories or walk out? And we were told yes on all of it. I had an architect come up with a plan. It ended up being fourteen hundred square feet, and we got a building permit from Eric. And I decided, well, because it had a few little jogs because of the weird shape of the lot. And that was adding building costs, so I applied for a variance. And at that point, Eric said, no, you can't do any of that. So, anything that we were told up until that point was not correct information, and we couldn't build. And we didn't want to lose another summer, so we bought this little cabin. Four hundred and ninety square feet. And we had the lot, and we, I had some health issues, and then COVID hit, and we haven't been able to do much, so we sold the lot. And the reason for wanting to get, add some space to this cabin is my health. I, I just can't get around that little teeny cabin, and I think I explained to one of you before, you can't just go out and sell, we can't sell our cabin and buy something else. It's not out there. We've been, we've looked, and this is not out there. Plus, we'd be giving up the community that we like being in at Paradise Cove. We like it there. And that's why we're asking to not change the footprint, not get any closer to the lake. The, the deck is there, and it's been there since, I think, since the cabin was built. And we were looking to expand on the living room, so that I wouldn't be tripping over things, and I would have some space to move. And then we thought, well. What would be the problem of going up? And that's, that's where we're at, at this point. Any more detail I can give it to, but we, it's been a long journey. With environmental services, and Eric's been very helpful, don't get me wrong. But we did have a rough first year.
Eric, a question for you. Besides this variance, the report indicates that a CUP amendment needs to be approved. Does the association apply for that amendment correction? It has to go through, through us and to the county commissioners, and that amendment would modify the original condition used permit to allow this cabin to be different. Not all of them to do it, but just, is, is that how that amendment would, would be, would be done?
Yes, that would be the minimum that would need to happen, but they could at that time ask for other amendments to the permit as well.
They could, yeah.
Other questions or comments from the board?
This is Veronica. I just have a question. What is the current height? What is the height of this current structure?
That's a good question.
Yeah, I don't know. I just know that, I just know that the guy who remodeled our cabin and built it, he came up with the plans on that. And I think it would be, with the second story, it'd be twenty-five feet, because it would take out all the vault.
Right, I just want to know the height of the current structure, so I can see, calculate the difference between the two. What you're proposing and what we have now.
I'm sorry.
Ah, it's okay.
No, we looked at, I think we kind, when we looked at it, Mark was.
Did you say seven?
Oh, you know, ten feet, and then the gable, where he was guessing, maybe fourteen, fifteen feet, something, something in that range. Because it looks like a four, you know, what, four twelve, whatever, pitch, standard pitched roof. And you got one story, and then you got that four, yeah.
There you go.
There you go.
That's, I don't know if you used the height with the foundation on that side, the other side is.
Would be the other side.
Got to go to the highest point, and, and Mark and I walked around to that back corner.
Yeah.
Not the, I think the other side, the house, because that's the high point.
That would be the high.
Right, right there, and, and Mark looked up, and he said, well, you know, that's about ten feet, and about four, so, you know, some more of that range. So, they'd be adding.
And so you want to be twenty?
Eleven, twelve feet to the, to the height of it.
Yeah.
This is Mike. I guess I have some issues with this. It seems to me that when you add that much height, it's a definite impact. And I would think then it's just a matter of time before we're being asked for increased heights on other units, and, and I'm not sure, in my mind, that's a precedent I want to go down. And I also view that there is a difference between a deck and a permanent structure. So, it's, to me, it's not a, an even exchange, so. As this sits now, I, I guess I have quite a bit of trouble with this proposal as, as it is here, and would not be inclined to, to move, to approve, is where my thoughts are.
This is Veronica. I do have concerns with the height request being at thirty-seven point five feet in the shore impact zone, or, yeah, thirty-seven and a half feet. Again, with your request, you're, for that height, it's like an additional ten or plus feet. I do have a, some issues with that as well, according with the ordinance, and doing any type of enlargements in the shore impact zone. Reasonable requests, you know, are common. I think that this proposal might be a little bit larger than I prefer. That's just my comment.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
I guess. If you looked at all those cabins we got in there, it's just a small little development. You're not, we're not going to have high rises going in there. It's not going to be very big. And if you look right across the lake from us, a guy took a double-wide trailer two years ago, and it's a, it's got to be about a forty-some square foot, fourth of a square foot house, two-story. You know, with accessory, I mean, I guess, I don't, I don't fully understand what impact, because there's nothing, no one behind us.
I guess part of what I'm looking at, sir, is from the lake view. At this view, measuring, measuring from the ground to the twenty-four and a half feet high. But then when you flip it and go to the other side, and add all that concrete that you already have down there, and you look at it from the lakeside, and you're looking up, it's going to look over thirty feet tall in some areas, or very close to it, unless I'm incorrect, but it's going to be thirty feet tall. And, and you're in the shore impact zone at only thirty-seven feet from the lake, so it's, it's a bit obtrusive possibly in my eyes.
I think I'm with you, Veronica, on this. Building living space, lakeward, when you're already in the shore impact zone, is very much in conflict with what we typically would approve. A lesser height might be reasonable, but to add eleven or twelve feet up in height will make it stand out. So, I think what's proposed is pretty excessive for that lot. For those two, for those two reasons.
And if I may, just a quick, for the board and the records mentioned, this is Eric speaking, and there is no one in the audience, so there is no public record or comment to be able to be taken. So, I just wanted to note that before conversation continues.
Just officially, I will ask for public comment. Hearing none, I close public comment. Yes, sir.
Is there anything on that, our, our particular unit that you would look at if we did something different?
Well, there's a lot of possibilities, and what, I can only speak for myself, is that, I guess, any permanent living space closer to the lake would be extremely problematic for me to, to entertain. I, I'd have a hard time at thirty-seven feet. It's, we're right on the lake, and it's a slope right going into the lake. And as far as height, I understand the height is measured from the highest point, but again, the view shed, when you look at it with that foundation, and you're going up. I'm not sure what you could propose, you know, I, I will never say never until I hear it, but I just don't know what that would be at this, at this point.
So, closing in the deck is, I guess I don't understand what the issue is, if we closed in the deck.
There's quite a difference between an open deck and a closed living space, as far as the appearance and the effects and everything else. Whereas that deck is not a totally impervious surface. It has some drainage through it. And again, it's not nearly as obtrusive as a per. And again, it's not nearly as obtrusive as a permanent structure when you're looking at the view. That's, that's my opinion.
I, I, one other thought, um, you've not formally made any proposal to the, um, so the Planned Unit Development Association. Do you really think they would approve this extensive a change?
Yeah.
Yeah, I do think, cause some of them, well, if they could, some would like to build towards the road or something, a way to, um, well, what I, what I don't understand is when we first bought into the area, um, and Jack Brand sold it to us and he had the property first and he showed us all his plans. And they said, oh, the things that we've changed now is that we can build two stories on here or whatever. So, we can now build up, we can't, and that's how we bought the property. And from my understanding, it's written up that way. So, I don't understand how, and-
Then he, he probably didn't understand that the, uh, the covenants, a hundred twenty-five square feet expansion maximum.
Well, Jack is a realtor and he showed us the whole thing and he was talking two floors. So, and I'm like, well, if we can only go six forty or whatever it might be, who would build a base of only three twenty and then just build up? You know what I mean? And that's not what he showed us and that's how we purchased it and that's how we were understood on all of them, actually.
When did you purchase?
We purchased our lot in two-
No, this, this particular piece right here that we're doing.
Two thousand nineteen.
Two thousand nineteen?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I guess I'd like to point something out, I guess, I understand what you're saying. But when we bought our original lot, we went out and we spoke to everybody at Environmental Services over a month, including Eric. We had the, the plans drawn up, this was a, I mean, from the lake, it looked like a three-story, it was a walkout. And we got a building permit for it. If I had not asked for a variance, that would've been built. And so now, you know, and so I figured, well, when I got the variance, it was denied, we would try and figure something out and we bought the cabin just so we wouldn't miss time on the lake, so.
We're still gonna build on the other lot, but we-
So, it's not like we weren't given a message from Hubbard County. And now you're saying that-
I can't, I can't speak for Hubbard County or what they may or may not have done or talked to you about. Uh, what's in front of us is, is this particular thing. It's not about, anything about the lot that you had in the past. So, we can only address the issue at hand, which is this particular cabin and your request that's in front of us.
No, but I guess the thing I'm trying to get at is I'm not, I'm not unfamiliar with everything you're doing here. But the message we got from Environmental Services was not, you couldn't do anything. You could do plenty of things and you, as a matter of fact, you could go two stories. And now-
Well, you can't go two stories on this particular cabin that you own now without a var- variance and then the CUP being adjusted. Am I correct in that? So, that's what we're addressing. I can't go back in time to address something that's not in front of this board. I understand what you're saying, but what we're dealing with is your request for this particular cabin.
Is there anything we can do? Come back?
I can't speak for the board.
This is Veronica speaking. Um, just to kinda give you a little perspective, um, we have five findings of facts that we have to answer affirmatively in order to approve this application. And this is just the first step because then it still has to go to the amendment for the CUP. But like for question number one, it says, is the variance in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the official controls? And currently, the answer is no, because this proposal would increase this cabin's square footage a hundred and twenty-eight percent. So, that gives you an idea of how much larger that you wanna build this cabin in the shore impact zone at thirty-seven and a half feet from the water's edge. So, this would make the cabin significantly larger than the ever, other cabins in the planned unit development and cause it to stand out aesthetically. As I mentioned, my first statement to you, when you're viewing from the lake, how much larger it's going to look, not only with your current vision that you have, but with that concrete at the bottom as well. So, it's going to look like it's nearly thirty-some feet in the air. So, that's number one. That's hard to say yes to. So, that's, I can give you the no's there. Um, so that's just kind of one of the questions that we have. There's five altogether. And so, there are, I don't know about my other colleagues, but that one right there itself is the hard one for us. That large of an expansion at thirty-seven feet from the ordinary high watermark. Now, I don't know if you could take your cabin and go down, you know, build a walkout basement. I don't know what your capacities are, you know, as far as construction, but maybe you should go that route. You should venture that way, see what you can build a lower level. You would have to speak with Environmental Services and still, because I know you're still in the situation to where you can only enlarge, uh, the percentage, what was the percentage, a hundred and twenty-five square feet? So, there's a possibility that you're gonna need a variance, but going down and only requesting a smaller height is gonna be more beneficial to you. Again, I can't speak for my colleagues, but I would be more open to something with a walkout, you know, or just something smaller height-wise and reasonable. And you can possibly build back some of the square footage that you want and not forward.
Right.
So, just giving you some ideas.
I, I think Veronica's point is what you're asking is probably not seen as reasonable. Doesn't mean you can't do something.
Correct.
But you, the hurdles, one of the hurdles you have is this hundred twenty-five square feet, uh, and not go up under the covenants. If they were changed, we could probably allow some vertical expansion. But once again, the county ordinance or the ordinance is thirty-five feet at a hundred foot setback. We tend to kinda taper that forward, which would say at your numbers, you're in the fifteen to seventy, seventeen feet maximum height that you'd be able to go. And those are the kinds of ways that we've managed it. So, people have said to you, you can do, yeah, you can do some things, uh, without being explicit. A little bit concerning that the realtor would lead you to believe there was all kinds of stuff you could do, when in fact, uh, that's probably not consistent with what the record would say at the time, so.
So, we could look at going down, possibly.
Possibly, this is Veronica speaking. You still may need to get a variance because you can't exceed a hundred twenty-five square feet, but my point was, is that it would be more visually appealing from the lakeside. You're not gonna have that super height and be significantly larger and, you know, there were still hoops that you'll have to go through and paperwork and, and applications.
Tim speaking, I'm, I'm leaning towards sticking to what that, a hundred and twenty-five square feet.
Quite one more question for you. Since that seems to be a sticking point with the CUP, what do you, I mean, I guess when I asked, I didn't, I didn't ask you, I think I asked whoever was at the desk. Should I do that application first?
No, procedurally, if a variance is needed in addition to amending the conditional use permit, we would start with the variance.
Doesn't that seem to be kind of a sticking point with the board? And if the CUP says only this and you wanna amend it, how do we get by this?
Well, the, these folks were the head of planning commission member as well, and so they would hold the public hearing on the conditional use permit amendment and then make a recommendation to the county board on that.
So, do I do it the same way I've done it now? I mean, if I wanted to say, look at going down and then I, I, I mean, I was planning on going for the CUP amendment as well, but I had to go to this step first.
Other questions or comments from the board?
What's the CUP amendment?
Entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to deny the application and accept the findings of facts of the staff.
This is Mike. This Timothy made the motion. I'll second that, so we have a motion by Tim, a second by Mike to deny the application, accept the, uh, staff's findings of fact. Timothy, how do you vote?
Timothy, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
Veronica, I vote aye.
This is Mike, I vote aye. Motion is, carries, uh, it's, the request is denied. Thank you.
You guys have maybe tabled this or continued it?
The board's taken action and it's been denied.
I'm just asking a question, I'm not trying to-
We, we have the option to approve, deny or table. We chose to deny the application tonight.
Not being confrontational, I'm just asking a question.
And I'm, I'm just stating what our three options are and the option that we took.
So, we have to wait a year now?
If you, you may reapply within a year if you have a materially significant enough change that it differs from what was presented today.
So, going down, that's significantly different, right?
And reducing the height of the structure is a significant change.
Another five hundred dollars? That's why I was hoping for a table.
Unfortunately, sir, with tabling the application, there was too many variant, variables with your request, so that's the best, that was the best route and starting fresh would be the best route.
So, if we come up with a significant difference?
I would say going down is significant, right? Are you, are you saying though that, see, I'm, I'm not sure if, I just wanna clarify or whatever. Um, so if we go down, we can only add on a hundred and twenty-five feet or we have to get that? I guess I don't know where the hundred and twenty-five feet comes from. My-
That's a condition placed on the conditional use permit that limits the expansion of this cabin to an additional hundred twenty-five square feet of living space.
That's why we were gonna go for the amendment.
Yeah.
And it's due to that because it's thirty-seven and a half feet from the shore, from the ordinary high watermark, most likely.
Oh, okay.
This is Timothy. So, that conditional use permit that was set up with those restrictions was, uh, trade off those restrictions for them to be allowed to leave a cabin at thirty-seven feet from the lake.
I understand that.
Oh, okay.
This is Veronica speaking. What was the ordinary high watermark when that CUP was constructed or?
It was a little over a foot lower and so this cabin was just outside of the impact zone at that time that the conditional use was processed. And then a year later roughly, the state raised the ordinary high a foot plus, which brought this into the shore impact zone. Otherwise, had this been processed under the current ordinary high, then it would've required an alternate footprint location to be made available for this to be rebuilt on. That would meet the setback.
Okay.
I think we have three in our development that have another alternative.
And this one does not.
No. Well, thank you, I appreciate you guys.
Thank you. Um, move on to miscellaneous and/or communications.
It's a week out from the deadline for the June meeting, so we will have a probably healthy sized agenda for June. Anticipate, uh, conditional use permit amendment for a resort and an accompanying variance. And then, uh, the others, possibly, uh, that plat that was approved preliminarily might come back in for final, I'm not sure, I haven't heard anything. And, uh, we'll probably get a number of variances. Uh, first meeting where it's been nice out for a while, we usually see a influx in applications, so I would imagine it'll be a good sized agenda.
Just for the record, um, I will not be here for the lot views in June, but I will be here for the meeting.
Same here, I will be not for the views, but here for the meeting. And, you know, obviously this stuff will come ahead of time for review. If I have to, I'll drive around and look. I've done that, so.
That's what I'll do also.
Can't go on the property, I don't think, but I-
So, that's all I've got.
Anything else? I'll entertain a motion.
This is Timothy, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
This is Veronica, I second the motion.
Motion by Timothy, second by Veronica to adjourn. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
Veronica, I vote aye.
Mike, I vote aye, meeting adjourned. Thanks, everyone.